Okay. Today's Troy Planning Commission meeting for April 11th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Wolkey?
Here.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mr. Teterington? Mrs. Sne? Here. Mr. McGary?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have our minutes of our March 14th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions in those minutes?
Move to be approved as presented.
Second. The motion is second. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Wolkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Minister, approve.
First matter on the agenda, historic district application for 24 North Market Street. The staff have reported, who was that, Tammy?
No, that's me.
Okay.
Okay, so applicant Matt McCray, who is the owner of your family bank in Miami County, is requesting the planning commission to review an application for four window signs to be installed at 24 North Market. The signs total 41.8 square feet. The business is allowed to have 88.5 square feet of signage. The material of the signs, the final, signs one and three in the packet will be the color white, and then signs two and four will be white, apple green, PMS-361, and intense blue, PMS-301. Staff recommends approval. Due to the proposed window signs will meet all the city of Troy code requirements, the graphics are tastefully created, and the colors of the sign will not distract from the existing colors of the building.
Are those any of the samples that are here?
No.
Okay.
It's just what's provided in your packet.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Does the commission want to take any action on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll stick up.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wolkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
It is approved.
And next we have a historic district application for 109 South Walnut Street for a sign structure to display the address. The staff have reported.
I'll take that one, Mr. Chair. Terry Parmenter and Lorraine Wyatt, resident as well as owner of 109 South Walnut Street, the new bed and breakfast called the Charlotte Bed and Breakfast, has applied for a review of a sign stand. The sign is basically an address for the location. There's an aerial showing where it's going to be located, as well as some pictures. The stand itself is about nine square feet, and the address in the middle is less than two and a half square feet, so it's actually considered incidental sign, which is exempt in our sign code. Staff is recommending the stand itself as the color is white, matches the house or the bed and breakfast. That is a 19th century period white colonial. That would be our recommendation is approval.
Any questions of staff?
I'm just confirming, they're only planning on putting the address here, nothing about the name of the business, just the address.
Correct, at this time.
Any other questions of staff?
Move to approve.
The motion is approved, is there support for the motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkey?
Yes.
It's approved.
Okay, the next matter to come before the commission is a historic district application for 301 to 305 West Water Street. The staff have reported.
Yes, we do. If you don't mind, first, I would kind of like to go over the DRO, just as a refresher to the planning commission. It's been a while since you have reviewed it, and there were some minor changes made at the council level. All of you have ordinance 02010-2018 in front of you. That's the actual ordinance that was approved that establishes the downtown riverfront overlay district. Really, the changes, just to kind of go over the changes, most of them from what you reviewed and you recommended on, besides the map changes, which I'll go to after this, I just want to start with the verbiage changes. Really, if you go to the last page, there's page 10 and page 11, what the city council asked to do was to have an opportunity to hear or take action on items that you make recommendations on. So, for example, if a property comes to you that is below a half acre, originally, the results of the planning commission would have been final. Council has put language in there that states that after a recommendation by the planning commission is made, they have five business days to take action to say that they want to hear this case. Then the DRO goes in front of city council, and they'll take action as normal legislation. That is something that is new. If the parcel is over a half acre, it was required to go through city council. So, that is something a little different than what you guys saw, the language in front of you.
Just for our own notification, the issues that are before us today, how much and any curages at?
Both of these, both cases are under a half acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then, changes to the map, I just rushed some maps to you. The first one, the smaller one, with the word "proposed" crossed out, because that was as quick as I could get them to you, that is what is in effect today. So, this is the actual district, the small map here. It does run basically along, in front of Staunton Road, all the way over up Riverside, and then it cuts along near Treasure Island and runs down basically the railroad tracks to the west, as they come across West Main. It jogs down to Ridge Avenue, and then, on the southern border, it follows the first block that touches West Market Street, and then that runs and continues all the way to Union. Then it takes the jog up Union Street, and it cuts across the first houses that face, I believe that is Canal Street, and then it connects on the other side of the east State Route 41 bridge, and connects back up, kind of zigzagging through Miami shores, up to the parcel. That is what is in effect. What you guys had seen, the changes, was this bigger map, which was a little smaller area. As you can tell, the really big difference is they included the first blocks of the boundary roads, so that way it wasn't split down the middle of a road, it was either side of that street would be included in, and they took the northwest portion, instead of it coming down, instead of it coming down Harrison Street, it captured that entire neighborhood. So, that's really the major change, and then they also dropped it on the east side down two blocks. So, if this makes sense to you, looking at the map, they took this area here, dropped it down two blocks, everything else was pushed out to capture the frontage of those blocks, and then they incorporated the entire neighborhood of North Madison Street.
Okay, the ordinance is now going to talk by city council, is that right?
That is correct, it is in effect, yep.
And the description that's in there encompasses the map that you just showed us?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, now, going to the actual full report, it's kind of a, kind of a three-step process. So, we wanted the first one to be the more challenging, just to get it over with. So, there's three pieces to this. One is a demolition, two is a reuse plan, and then three would incorporate the DRO. We did this in three separate reports. That way, if you want to take action on the three individual steps, you could. The first one, the demolition, with demolition stated there is a re, there is a reuse plan. However, that reuse plan cannot be put into effect until the DRO is approved. So, really, we can take action on the demolition today, because there's kind of two plans, which I'll go through, and then the DRO is required to have two readings. It's introduced today as the introduction. We can go through it, but no action can be taken by the planning commission, and then it will have a public hearing, if you will, at the next meeting, and then is when action can be taken. You guys can either choose to approve, modify, or deny the application at that point in time. So, the first one, okay, thank you, the first one is demolition. So, the request for demolition comes to the current building that's located at 301-305 West Water Street. We did look up the OHI form, which is the Ohio Historic Index Form, and it talked about important features. On the form included two small porches at opposite ends with turnposts. That was really the only important feature that was mentioned originally. However, the OHI form references, the original building has been heavily altered, which you can tell by looking at it to what it was, and then what is currently there. This property is really no stranger to the property maintenance code. We had several violations at this property that have been addressed in the past, and I actually-
Kind of violations, excuse the interruption.
Yeah.
What kind of violations?
We've done violations from broken siding, missing siding, two trash violations. There was some high grass at one point in time in the past on the east side area. To the west, they have a little grass area, just some upkeep and things of that nature.
Thank you.
During our research, we did find that in the 2004 Troy Historical Society report, it did identify this property as an at-risk property. The application before you talks about demoing this property and then rebuilding another property. Before I go into the reuse plan, there is a second, I guess, reuse plan, and that would be green space. And the second green space is there in case you would like to make a demolition request so the applicant could get started on the demolition. He does have an application through the DRO to reuse that property, which you have as the next report in your packet. If that is not suitable, he would propose to turn that place, to turn that property into green space, plant a grass seed until the DRO would be approved, so the demolition wouldn't be stopped at this point in time. But staff does recommend demolition of the existing structure and structure based on the following: It's not listed on the national register, will not have a negative impact to the historical or architectural integrity of the area, it has little or no significant historical or architectural value, and a reuse plan has been submitted before planning commission.
Any questions of staff? I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. At this point, the commission can approve items A and B under five, but we can only have like a first reading on item C, is that correct?
Yeah, not really. So, you can, you can approve, sorry, you can approve A, because it's strictly a demolition, but B cannot be approved, because it does not meet our zoning requirements, and needs to have C be approved to approve B. Clear as mud, I hope, right?
And the demolition on section A, the demolition's requested?
Correct.
Requires a reuse plan?
Correct.
So, as far as this application before is for consideration right now, it's for demolition, and the reuse plan is to put it in a green space?
Green space, yep.
At this point. And then, later on, we can discuss taking it out of green space and-
Correct.
And something else, all right. I have a couple of questions. In referencing the page that you gave us here-
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the plot plan, just so that I have a concept of what we're dealing with, the house that I see the picture of, is that this structure here?
Yeah, the house you have-
Because it also says there's an existing building on this side.
Yeah, that's the actual, that's the law director. It's just the first building you pointed to, the 301-305.
It says that this house is owned by Water Street Investments-
Correct.
Which is the same owner as this.
Yes, because the property was just sold, and the tax maps haven't been updated.
Hasn't been, yes, oh, okay, I got you.
Right now, the owner is Four Sons Development.
Gotcha. Who owns this?
In the middle, right now, MCD has a, owns the portion of that in between the Four Sons Development property and the Water Street LLC building.
So, it's not owned by either one of those adjacent owners?
Correct.
Okay, that, because that used to be the stub street, sub stub portion of Short Street.
And from what I can recall, when we vacated, it went to the MCD. They took it over.
Gotcha. Okay. That answered my question. So, as far as the demolition's concerned, there's no demolition that has to be undertaken under that stub street portion of Short Street?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on this matter? And we're dealing with the application for demolition, which application has a reuse for placing the property into green space? Unless items B and C are approved.
Correct.
Which can't be approved-
At this meeting.
Right. Commission want to take any action? I'll make the motion reapproved.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who did the second?
The district.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
For demo only.
For demo with reuse of green space.
With reuse of green space, again. Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
It is approved.
Okay. Do you want to take it from here?
Okay. Now, the fun begins. So, the application for reuse, this is strictly going through the reuse, and this application does not involve the DRO. That will be the next report that we'll go through. So, the historic review and all these samples are by Sue, if you want to pass it around. There's, all these go for this report, everything in front of you. So, the first thing, the first report would be that, the use of the property. So, currently, they will be building a new building. It'll be a three-story structure that is residential, that'll be three units, broken into 301.
Is that it? Just the bricks and the-
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all the stuff's there, I just didn't want to, you can pass them, and we'll talk about them as we go along. The rendering on the bottom, I tried to make it extremely heavy for you.
I feel like it should be showing this somewhere.
That's it. There is a young-
The backside is just, is old, so don't pay attention to the backside.
Garage doors. And here's your architectural renderings.
Now, if in fact this, we've done this, are these materials a part of your file?
Yes, yes, they will be. Yes, they will be, yes. I'll continue on. It'll be a, sorry, a three-story building that will be broken into three units, 301, 303, and 305 West Water Street. We have, you have the plans there that show the first, second, and third floor layout. The building will encompass two-car parking garage for each unit off of West Water Street. That will be on the first floor, part of the first floor, and then the rest of the floors will be used for residential. The height of the building, the height will be 37 feet 8 inches from the grade, which is allowable in the OR1 zoning district, of which this property is currently zoned. And the facade, as you see the pictures coming around, you have the brick, that's going to be the most common form of the building that is going around. And then, we did provide all the paint samples, instead of me reading all of those, they're in your report, and you have those samples with each color swap assigned to each area of the building. And then, the windows, I'll just kind of go through these windows, are aluminum-clad windows with tint sash, double-hung, vintage-style windows. A pamphlet is being passed around. And then, the window bays will project 12 inches with composite trim, and that was the resort tan that was being passed around. The bigger items, the garage doors, they are clope steel insulated doors with ultra-grain, ultra-grain wood grain steel door paint coating. The doors will be painted mountain ash. The pamphlet is being passed around as well. The parking, we talked about, they're required to have six parking spaces, but each unit comes with its own two-car garage, so it covers the parking spaces. The roof, which will not be visible from the street level, will be a standing seam metal roof. It'll be colored urban bronze. Exterior lighting, there is information in the packet to show the lightings. There are several lightings, spaces on the front, those are coach lighting, and the packet is with you. Those will be black magic will be the color. The requirements that do not meet the current zoning code issues are building lot coverage. Currently, our code requires, allows for 50% of building lot coverage. The applicant is proposing 88% of the building to be covered by, by the building at this point in time. That will need to be approved through the DRO application, which you will hear next. There is a deck off the back of that, you can kind of see it from the rendering, that comes off the, off the back. It is a, it's three concrete decks that hang off the backside of the building. It'll be elevated off the second story and overhangs the northern property line. That actually hangs into the Miami Conservancy District property. There is a memo of understanding that is currently being executed now, that will be presented to you. We didn't have it signed in time for the meeting from the parties. We will have that at the next meeting, but that is executed between Four Sons Development and Miami Conservancy as an aerial rights, so they would have the rights to build on the, above the property line. There were some requirements, which you'll see, had to keep a certain level of clearance and be a certain level above the retaining wall. Also, one of the other requirements that didn't meet the DRO was the lot size, because these will be broken into three separate parcels instead of one parcel. The zoning code requires those to be at a minimum of 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. That would not be met. That is the reuse plan that comes before you. As part of a reuse plan in the historic district, we talked about compatibility with the historic district. We reviewed this for compatibility in terms of scale, massing, facade treatment, and how it represents the existing conditions on that block to what is going to potentially be there. I think the applicant made a very conscious effort to blend in the character of the proposed building. The colors are pretty neutral. It is brick, which is a common theme of downtown. I think the building will complement the block that is proposed to be built within. The setbacks are built right up to the property lines, which is very common in that block. Most of the homes or most of the buildings on that block go to the front of the lot lines, so that is nothing that is out of place. And then, the land surrounding it is a mix of residential office and commercial uses, and this has residential use, so it does blend in well. One of the things we wanted to go ahead and look at was the visioning section of the comprehensive plan and how this building would fit. We do talk about, in the visioning section, it's chapter 13 of the comprehensive plan, we talk about development goals and promoting the utilization of older buildings or new builds, which utilizes the second and third floors and encourages property owners to reinvest into downtown properties, encourages safeguarding the historic district, building and feel, and I think the application does that, and we have reviewed it for all other compliance with the zoning code requirements, and it does meet those requirements other than the responsibility of the historic district review process and the DRO. So, staff would recommend approval of the proposed construction based on several factors. One is, the proposed structure is new construction, and while it's a building of its own time, it is compatible, and they have gone to great efforts to fit this into the current district. Two, it reflects a conscious effort to respect the architects of the architectural style of the existing historic district. It matches in terms of scale, mass, and proportion. It is in compliance with the City of Troy comprehensive plan with reinvestment, especially in the downtown district. And then, lastly, it is, would be contingent upon it being approved through the DRO process and receipt of the signed agreement between the MCD and the property owner.
Take a breath.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody have a question, staff? As I understand it, on Water Street, there's a zero setback?
That is correct, yes, it would be built to the property line.
Does that mean that the lamps and the overhang from the roof will actually extend over the right-of-way?
Well, I think there is a small set, I guess I shouldn't say zero, it's less than a foot, and I believe that the lamps will still be on the private property and not overhang onto the public right-of-way.
And Conservancy has agreed to allow the balconies to overhang their property?
Yes, I've seen the draft, I've seen the actual memo of understanding between the two parties. Like I said, I just don't have the signed agreement.
And the recommendation of staff is to have our approval-
With a contingency.
-contingent upon receiving such. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
We're asking for two additional curb cuts, two, three additional curb cuts. Do we have any problems? Should a police chief weigh in, or a street department weigh in, or does anybody have a problem?
We, we have gone through our review process, and we do recommend approval of those, so.
Okay. The question I, another question I have is, is, I like the looks on it, there's a, we're going to be selling, there's going to be three separate units, three separate lots that are being sold.
Correct.
So, we're going to have party walls between the two structures?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Are we concerned about protecting the new buyers of those properties? Should we require a party wall agreement to be in place upon the sale of those properties?
If you don't mind, I'll ask either the architect or the owner to come up. I know that issue has come up before, and I don't know what you've agreed upon or decided. I would not want to speak for them.
Sure.
If you would have minded, stop.
If you don't mind identifying yourself, sir.
Yes. Jim Baumann with Architrend, the architects for the project. Yeah, the property lines go down between the units. It's an eight-inch concrete block wall, so it all meets the requirements for zero lot line, so that's, that's how we have it designed.
Okay, you also understand that's a party wall between the two units?
Right, exactly.
And usually, party wall agreement say, hey, thou shalt not destroy this wall, because there's a, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it your intention, when you sell these properties or get them ready for sale, that there be something implemented-
Yes.
...into the deed?
Yeah.
Showing that there are certain restrictions and limitations-
Right.
...on this that wall?
Yes.
There is, okay. How about the entranceway to the two easternmost units? That appears to be like a common area, or is there going to be some sort of-
Yeah, the property line will go between it, but there'll be, there'll be an access agreement between those two properties that, for that sidewalk and stairs leading up to the foyers.
Good.
Yeah.
And then, the one on the west has its own separate entranceway?
Right.
And that access, that'll be solely owned by them, so we don't need to worry about it?
Right.
An access agreement between the two parties?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
So, you're anticipating the occupants will own each unit rather than, like a rental?
Correct, it's not a condo. So, it's, it's three separate, single-family townhouses.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We don't have zero lot lines in our zoning code, do we?
We do in the B3 Central Business District.
Which is where this is at, but this is an overlay.
Yeah, this is actually in the OR1 district, so it is not, that's why a DRO, the next application, talks about that.
Gotcha. Is there any reason, I don't know that if we approve this, we can require the addition of a party wall agreement or the access agreement at this point?
Yeah, we couldn't, I don't think we could require that at this point, because-
All right. Any other questions of staff?
If I could follow up on your question about the curb cuts, do we know, understanding that those residential parking places will be provided, how many on-street parking places would be affected by creating this and potentially relocating on-street parking around this structure?
Trying to pull my picture of the property up here. Believe it or not, I had a conversation with the county commissioners regarding parking in that exact area. You think I would be able to remember?
Well, it looks like it's 70-foot long, and there's no curb cuts in there now, that's 70-foot, so that would take in about-
Well, and I just wondered how many were currently in front of these lots that might-
I think there's two in front, if I'm guessing.
And it would affect a third one there.
And they are providing six off-street.
Okay, I just wonder.
To the building.
Any other questions?
I'm not sure if I should bring this up now or later in the meeting, but we're kind of following the ground here, and this is going to be a precedent-setting meeting, or next meeting will. I just wonder if it might, or if anybody else feels it would be appropriate for the law director to kind of give us an orientation on the ramifications of this new ordinance.
Would you like us to request the law director be at the next meeting and have that presentation before the public meeting is held for this?
I would love to see that, I don't want the rest of the commission.
That'd be fine. I would say any problem with that?
No, I agree.
And that sale to the applicant has happened, right?
That's correct, yes. Yep.
Good question. Any other questions? Okay. There before us now is an application, and staff has recommended approval of the application with, upon the condition that Miami Conservancy District approve the overhangs.
Mm-hmm.
And also, there's a second condition.
It's that the DRO process be approved and followed.
Yeah. Does anybody want to make such a motion?
I'm confused. Procedurally, are we making a motion to table this till our next meeting?
Contingent approval.
You would, yeah, you essentially were recommending basically the-
The reuse.
-approval of the historic, the review process, but yeah, you could not take really action on this until the next meeting. So this would be part of the DRO public meeting would go through. It's, it's the way the process works, so, because-
We could do it either way. We could table this matter and address it then when the DRO discussion is had, or we could go and prove it now contingent upon our adopting this for DRO use.
Because you're approving it with the recommendation that the DRO process is followed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm not sure where-
Let me, I can explain.
Where this, no, I don't think that's necessary. I can tell you, though, that as we were going back and forth at the, at the council level, the intention always has been that if it's, if it is a, a DRO application that primarily resides within the purview of the planning commission, that that second meeting or the public hearing is, is important. And of course, I think we're going to honor that. So, I know in spirit anyway, if it wasn't specifically laid out, I don't, I don't believe the intent was to take any action at the first meeting, but rather just hold it, I know we don't have second readings at the planning commission, but that's in essence what this is and the way it was set up. So whether, you know, if, if we're going to take an official motion, then it would be to table this until next, until the public hearing, I believe would probably be the most appropriate precedent-setting action for, for every review.
Pending our action next week, but I'm more familiar with table.
Now, when we get into the larger, larger ones where the planning commission recommends to the council, and then the council has the hearing, then action at this first meeting would be appropriate at the planning commission level.
So I don't, do I understand that you're making a motion to table this application?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there support for that motion, Mr. Page? There's no further discussions, please call the roll.
Wait, the second please.
That's Mr. Walkie.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Next, Timmy, you're still up?
Yeah. Last one, I promise. This is for the actual DRO application, which you just made a table of the historic review for this. Essentially, not to go through the repetition of this, but there were four items that did not meet current zoning regulations. One being the lot size we talked about, two being the lot coverage, three being the setback requirement, and four being the lot, the property lines, which was the MCD requirement. When going through the DRO, there is criteria that have to be met, or I guess there's criteria that you base your decision off of, and that is listed in your report. There are 17 steps to that. However, that staff does feel when you review those with the creation of the DRO, the intent is for the district to be applied when conventional zoning district requirements are inappropriate or underlyingly the zoning district is unduly restrictive. And in this case, we feel that the creative reuse of the property fits to what the intended use of the DRO is for. And with that, we have a minimum effect on the environment and neighborhood. It does reach out and architecturally fits well with the historic district requirements, and we believe that this creative reuse of the property will have a positive economic impact and will improve the overall aesthetics of the development. And because of that, we will be recommending, or this will be taken to the next meeting for the second hearing. And just so everybody is aware, that the adjacent property owners are notified in writing, so their letters, I think, have been mailed already. So they are notified, the requirement calls for five days ahead of time. We've given them a little more time to review this since it is a large application. The letters state that the application is available in case they have any questions of staff, they can come review the application, but those letters did go out, and we are planning to have that at the next scheduled planning commission meeting.
Thank you. As Mr. Titterington already indicated, there is no procedure for a second or first reading at the planning commission level, so I don't know if there's any particular protocol. So we'll just accept your report then as the first reading of this matter and put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Do we table this one like you did in that, to be consistent?
No.
I approve, no, I think it's just a first reading.
Why did we table the last one?
Because it didn't require reading.
Because it incorporated a historic district review with the DRO.
Okay. Any other questions about the reading? Okay.
Perhaps the law director will address that.
Hopefully, he'll give us the procedural process, Mike. Okay. Hearing over the next matter. The application to have the downtown roof overlay district applied to 846 West Main. Staff have reported?
Yes, we did. And 31 Cedar.
And 31 Cedar, excuse me.
Yes, there are two properties that are being proposed to have the DRO overlay district considered by the planning commission, 846 West Main Street and 31 South Cedar Street. And as Tim previously stated, there are 17 factors that the planning commission will weigh and consider when looking at the possibility of approving a DRO for this property. In order to apply for the DRO, you have to have been denied in the regular zoning process because you don't meet the factors of the zoning code. And in the case of 846 West Main Street, they all are, the factors that have created the issue are all concerning the setbacks. So, the southern asphalt concrete area needs to be four feet from the property line. The canopy facing West Main Street is approaching into the 25-foot required front yard setback. The west side of property adjacent to South Cedar, the building is approaching into the 25-foot required front yard setback. And on the east side of property, the building is approaching into the required 10-foot side yard setback. On the 31 South Cedar Street property, the south and east asphalt concrete area needs to be four feet from the property line. Now, keep in mind that these are two separate lots. There is no intent to vacate the alley and combine these lots into one. So, 846 West Main Street, the proposal is to build a Greenville National Bank on that lot, and then the lot at 31 South Cedar Street for offsite parking. So, basically, as Tim said previously, the creation of the DRO district is for it to be applied when the conventional zoning requirements are inappropriate or underlying zoning district is too restrictive. And such is the case with this property, 846 West Main Street. The minimum required lot size in a B2 district is 40,000 square feet. This property has 15,681 square feet. So basically, it's a 61% reduction in area from the required minimum lot size. The same applies with the lot at 31 South Cedar Street. This lot encompasses 2,613 square feet, and it should also have 40,000 square feet. So that's a 93% reduction of area from the required standard lot size in a B2 district. So, the use of the downtown overlay district in this particular project will allow for the continued growth of economic development within the city, along with promoting the economic vitality of business, while enhancing the profitability of private investment, all while continuing to improve the aesthetic character of the city of Troy.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Hi, Mr. McGary, go ahead.
I just need a clarification. We're talking about two different pieces of property?
Correct.
One that faces Main Street and then one on the corner, and then there's one that's on South Cedar, right?
That's correct.
The South Cedar is the one that's going to be converted to the parking lot?
That's correct. It's currently empty at the moment. They demoed the building that was previously on it, so.
The way the parking is configured, I guess it requires the approval of the adjacent property to the east to allow cars to come across there and move into the parking lot? I mean, I don't know whether, you know, that needs special addressing or not at this point?
I don't believe so, because, let me pull it up here.
I mean, if that property owner decides to put a wall up there, you lose those parking spaces, right?
That is correct. You're correct.
Okay. I just thought, you know, if we're going to make any kind of approvals on this, is, you know, whether that's setting a bad precedent for, something that could come up in the future, if there's an argument between the property owners, they put a fence up and they say, well, this was approved by planning commission of the city.
Did staff take into consideration the parking spots on the adjacent property as a part of your discussion with us?
On, on the property that isn't 31 South Cedar Street? No.
You also mentioned that the alley was not to be vacated, but this document submitted to us says it will be.
That's correct.
But it's not going to be.
That is not going to happen.
I have a question concerning the water runoff. That area is, has experienced in the past difficulties in having the water run down our sewer lines, okay? Heavy rains, pond in the quarter of Alma Main, all sorts of things. In fact, the city has required in the past, the oil change place at the southeast corner has required a retention pond. Why aren't we requiring any retention pond on this lot?
In the stormwater management plan, onsite detention is not required if the property is less than an acre. So obviously, the, the lot is less than an acre, so onsite detention is not required. However, they, they are, if I remember correctly, adding an additional catch basin to the property to handle the stormwater runoff.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Once again, this will act as the first reading for this rezoning request, and we'll put it on the next agenda for our April 45th meeting. Staff have any other comments concerning this matter? Commission have any questions of staff concerning this matter? Okay, then moving on. I see a new face over there. How about an introduction?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. Before you is Robert Watson, and he just started on Monday. He's our new zoning inspector, so you're going to be seeing his face more often. He hails from Concord, North Carolina, which is about 90,000 population, is there about? Also home to NASCAR racing, so we're excited to have him.
Do they call you Robert or Bob?
Yes, sir, I go by Robert, but whatever you feel comfortable with, I'm fine.
Well, welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Commission have anything else they want to discuss? Staff have anything else? I'll entertain a motion, would you? Some motions are second?
Second.
All those, they're second, probably say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Stand your ground. Thank you, Mr. Page.